Good evening. I want to welcome everyone to the Dearborn School District Board of Education meeting, regular meeting for September 12, 2022. Before we do a roll call, I just again want to welcome everyone. And I just want to make a new, a real quick welcome to the beginning of the school year statement. So first of all, welcome back, everyone. Excitement is in the air and on the faces of our students and staff around the district. We are here to support and serve students throughout their educational journey. That is our sole purpose of being. And to that end, we must make sure that every student feels a sense of belonging, no matter who they are or what challenges they may face. They are welcome here and will be cared for and supported. Although we face countless challenges during these difficult times, we can and must work together to find appropriate solutions to adjust these challenges. Working together begins with respectful dialogue and collaboration. Accusations and inflammatory posts do not solve problems. They only add to divisiveness and discontent. Our children are watching. Let's teach them how to appropriately interact with each other while respecting a wider range of viewpoints and differing opinions. So thank you again for coming and spending the evening with us. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Di Ambroso.
Here.
Trustee Mosip.
Here.
Trustee Pachakoff.
Here.
Trustee Thorp.
Here.
Trustee Watts, here.
President McDonald.
Here. Next item, please.
Fledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Ms. Tammy Fornier, Principal of Howes School, will introduce students that will lead the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you for having us here today. I have here with us Eleanor Welton, Addie Welton, and Celine Khatib to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you for coming up, girls. I have something to give you. And I want to present each of you with this recognition for coming. We appreciate your helping us this evening with the pledge. Celine, there you are. And you can keep the bubble wrap and put it in there so it stays fresh before you get off. Eleanor?
Thank you.
Thank you. And Adeline?
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you so much. I also just want to take a quick acknowledgement and let everyone know that our new Chief of Police, Chief Sheehan, is here. And thank you so much, Chief, for coming and joining us this evening. Next item, please.
Superintendent's update, moment of silence.
All right. Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Michael was not feeling well today, so over, due to an overabundance of caution, he asked me to step in today. So I thank you for listening to me today. The first one is a moment of silence. Unfortunately, we had a sand incident at Woodworth Middle School of a passing of a student, Abraham Ali. And I know Dr. Michael attended the funeral and the school events, so if we could take a short moment of silence, please. Thank you. Do I just go on to the next one, too?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. For agenda items, we are recognizing two retirements. Pamela Kronowitz, 22 and a third year of service, and Emmanuel Mura, for 21 years of service. Let's give them a round of applause.
Next item?
Moving on to, oh, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Non-agenda items.
He's learning his new role.
Yes, absolutely.
Non-agenda items. So we were excited. We had an excellent start of the school year. The rain held off to later in the day, which was good, so everybody got their pictures and the excitement of lining up in the right spots, the right doors. The first day of school, David, I believe you have a video for us. Thank you, David, from your team, for putting that together, and all the staff, administrators, and that made this day a great success and a very happy day for a lot of kids, especially those who are coming for the first day. And I also know that Dr. Michael made it to all the buildings that same week to make sure he was visiting everyone and saying hi. So he works hard, there's no doubt about it. So moving on, on the non-agenda items, the COVID update, we're still monitoring the numbers and the vaccine update, so more information will come out regarding that. Bully prevention, we are working on a few things, including programs, assemblies, Sports World, principal meetings at all levels, and I'm sure that more information will come out on that also as we go along. And with that, if I can have Ms. Mason Alabasi come up and talk about the hiring process.
[inaudible]
You can do that if you want. We're flexible.
Also, with me is Jane as a president of the EFP, Dearborn Federation of Teachers.
Yeah. We just discovered that.
Thank you.
We shared what our current process was, some ideas that other districts are doing. We received board feedback, and then we also had a committee to review potential changes to the hiring process. This is everyone that was on the committee. And we want to thank them for their participation and their time throughout. We met in June, July, and also August a few times. And so the changes that we'd like to move forward with, based on this process, is as follows. For the central office director positions, the directors and the union presidents and/or the designees make recommendations for the superintendent interviews. And so for the central office director positions, the major change here is that there would not be all the stakeholder committees like we previously have done. Previously, we had staff, students for high school, staff, students in community parent committees. So for central office positions, the director positions, it would be the directors and the union presidents or their designees. And then that committee would interview all the candidates, make a recommendation for the superintendent interviews, superintendent and the executive director of that area. Right. So the major change on round two is that finalists will be interviewed by staff and a parent community committee combined. The staff committee is combined of both parents and community. But we will note that during this process, if staff wants to meet separately in caucus or parents want to meet separately in caucus, they can. So that way, we're hoping to kind of shore up the timeline on the interview process. And then read the other ones, you can. And then most of these we discussed at the last meeting, so I'll just touch on them. This was based on the feedback of things that we could do to improve the hiring process throughout the last seven years. I can tell you, we've tweaked it along the way and will continue doing so. It won't end here, based on what we learned and the feedback we continue to get. Continue our selection of the most qualified candidates, internal and external, adding a spreadsheet for screening committee to add their thoughts regarding the candidates. So when we used to do everything on hard copy, excuse me, we had a sheet that we wrote all this down, and then when we went all electronic, that piece kind of got lost, so we're going to add it back in electronically so everyone can put down their comments and their thought process as to why someone should or should not get an interview. Participants to be limited to two times unless there are no others that volunteer. So that way, we get a mix of who's participating on the committees. But of course, like, for example, we always put out there to the, all the directors who wants to participate. So it's really based on volunteering. But if we don't get anyone else, then we'll go, somebody can serve a third time. And then the drop in our ranking sheet, so in the interview process, you have, usually everyone just sets down their ranking sheets face down in a pile, so instead we'll either have a box or a folder that they put the folder, that they put their sheet into, so it gives more anonymity. We will consider using a digital form for voting. We already removed the names from the ranking sheets, so now it just says, like, what school do you represent? Are you a parent? Are you a teacher? Are you a community member or are you a student? And then we would consider giving all executive directors the opportunity to participate on the administrative committees, which we already do. Unions provide their member participants, they already do that, so the human resources has nothing to do with who participates from each union. That's done through the union leadership, so we'll continue doing that. The committee will consider ongoing feedback, which I said in the beginning regarding this process as needed. And we want to start, trustee Mosip had shared what was done at Henry Ford College, presented by Tracy Davis, I believe. And so I did look at that handbook, and there's a sheet in there. It's a really good process, so I'm still going to dig into it some more to see if maybe the executive directors could at least go through some training that has to do with how to interview from a diversity, equity, and inclusion perspective. And so it would be difficult to train everyone who participates, but if at least our leadership can go through that training, I believe that would be beneficial. But there is a sheet in there, and it talks about our commitment as a district and a practice statement about that when we participate, and this is for all applicants, or I'm sorry, all participants on the interview committees. I would just take a few minutes to read in the beginning, and it talks about what our practice is as far as diversity, equity, inclusion, and things to consider. And it basically says, you know, recognize your own biases in this process, and it's worded much more eloquently than that, though. And that's it.
Trustee Barry.
I'm very thankful for all the work that went into this process. I know former trustee Mary Lane joined us today. There's something she said a couple of years ago. COVID taught us anything, is we can't keep doing what we've been doing because that's the way we've always done it. So minor changes, let's see how it works, and if it serves us well, we'll continue. If not, like you said, we'll give some feedback from the community and from the board, and we'll go from there. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. I'm sorry. trustee Thorp.
You mentioned that committee members can be on it twice. Is that in a certain timeframe?
Oh, good question. We didn't specify the timeframe, I guess, annually.
Okay.
Because, you know, most of the hiring takes place spring. And sometimes we get unexpected processes, but usually, yeah, so I would say annually, off the top of my head.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you so much for that update. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item?
Oh, I have one more under. Yep, one last thing on other. If I could add, Dr. Ross Grover and Mr. Adam Martin come up and talk about library books.
So this is just a follow-up to the previous board meeting in regards to media centers and some of the books and information that is in there. So Dr. Grover is overseeing it. She's going to fill you guys in. This is my introduction for Dr. Grover.
Good evening, everyone. Board of Education, Chairperson McDonald and Mr. Wall. As a district, we've been continually refining our processes and procedures for materials in our school media centers for our students. We expect to have these processes updated and finished by the end of this week. And soon we'll begin the formation of the District Book Review Committee with parents, teachers, administrators, and media specialists to review books. While we work to update these processes, we've taken the following steps. We've temporarily removed from circulation seven titles that were submitted by parents. We've also temporarily removed student access to all eBooks that are available through the SOAR app in the Wayne Consortium and the Dearborn Public Library Overdrive collections. As their first task, the District Book Review Committee will meet to make a recommendation about the appropriateness of the seven books that have already been identified. Dearborn uses the Destiny system to provide an online catalog of district media materials that are in our collection. The district also subscribed to the SOAR app that is provided through Overdrive to provide students access to eBooks through the Wayne Consortium and the Dearborn Public Library. This was actually done, started during COVID, in an effort to provide eBook access to our students and has continued this year. All students had access to the SOAR catalog. One school merged the SOAR catalog eBooks with the Destiny system. This made it appear as if the books in question were only available at one school, but that's not the case. The SOAR catalog was available to all of our students. Access to all of the books, I'm repeating this, in the Wayne Consortium and Dearborn Public Library, Overdrive SOAR collections has been restricted for all students while the district works with Overdrive to gain local control of which eBooks are available to our students through the SOAR app. Are there any questions? trustee Pachakoff.
With the review committee, is it possible that there could be other community members? Because what we do in public education impacts our whole community and reflects the values of the whole community. So I was wondering if community members outside of the parent community could also be considered to volunteer for this review committee as well.
That's a great idea, and we certainly can do that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Continue.
I have one question.
trustee Mosip?
Yeah, we talked about flagging any inappropriate books that might have been in our libraries, and I believe you mentioned Dr. Grover, if there is like some kind of form where students can flag or parents can flag any books for review.
Yes.
Is that process now in place?
So it will be finalized by the end of this week, and we expect very shortly to have that up and available for the public.
Okay. Thank you.
And if you could just speak to what they will be reviewed, what the review process is and what they're looking for in the review, age appropriateness and grade appropriateness? Yes. So there is quite a process of looking at what's appropriate, but we need very specific criteria, and that's what we found. We have always had these processes, but we're finding that we need some more specifics to make sure that we're all on the same page as we're looking at that. And this will actually be applied to books we purchase in the future as well, the more specific criteria as far as appropriateness for our libraries. Okay. So a lot of it is tightening down process that we already have in place. Exactly. And also, we have over 100,000? We actually have over 300,000 books. We have over 100,000 discrete titles, so different titles. Okay. Multiple copies, we have over 300,000 books. Okay. That's a lot of work. So we appreciate the work that you're doing. Thank you very much. And we, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. trustee Watts.
So something that was mentioned at the previous meeting, if we have parents who would like their students to opt out of being able to borrow books, do we have a permission slip for that, just like they can opt out of sex education?
That's one of the things we're looking at, is how could we manage that system with our, with our staff to make sure that something isn't falling, you know, through the cracks? We want to make sure the system is as tight as possible, so that's one of the things we're reviewing as well. As tight as possible in that parents that are concerned about access can have controls over that, and parents who are more open are able to let their children explore different ideas and thoughts and books. Just one of the things we're looking at, yes, for sure. All right. Thank you. trustee Watts?
So speaking of the timeline, I know that you were saying that the access through SOAR right now is restricted, with the idea that we're going to have a chance to look through IT to allow access and what that would look like. Do we know what sort of timeframe IT needs for that?
I'm not sure if it's IT that looks at it. It's really looking, working with Overdrive to find out, because right now we have access, well, we just stopped access, but we did have access to all of the books in the Wayne Consortium, as well as the Dearborn Public Library. And one of the things that we, we noticed is that we kind of had all books or no books. And so that's what we're working with Overdrive on right now, is to see how we can gain that local control. If we decided that a book was inappropriate for our students through the book review committee, right now, we don't have the ability to remove that from our Overdrive Wayne Consortium. So we need that local control so that we could then not have access to that book if our book review committee decided that was an inappropriate book. In my understanding, that that is a problem throughout the system with other districts that use the consortium. Exactly. So, so we, so to be on the safe side, we just have temporarily restricted all access to it while we can gain, work out a system. And I imagine they will be working on that because that is their business. So. trustee Pachakoff?
Well, that, that is the direction of my next question. We've had this eBook availability during the COVID pandemic, and libraries were closed to help our students access other opportunities to read material. It had some kind of qualifications for restrictions of books due to age or whatever, but their experts determined what fell under those umbrellas of books available to a certain age group. I would have to believe that any student with a Dearborn Library card can access the Dearborn Library book system and any of the other libraries that fall under their purview, regardless of whether we have the SOAR app or not.
Yes, because the Dearborn Public Library, I actually use it quite often myself, I'm used as an app called Libby to access the Overdrive collections that are available at the Dearborn Public Library, and that's how you check out books. I mean, we can't restrict students with library cards from checking out eBooks.
I wanted to make clear first that there's still accessibility in an alternate way than what we have offered. If we cannot have Overdrive find a solution to this that meets the needs of this district, then does that mean we then eliminate this app and students are back to their own devices in accessing library books outside of their individual school systems?
I guess that would, could be the final decision. I am thinking that Overdrive is working on this problem because they're hearing this from lots of districts. There needs to be some kind of local control over the books that are selected for their cura, I mean, they are curated for K-12 students through the SOAR app. So, you know, I think there's other possibilities, but really, it would be up to the book review committee and to see how we move forward with this. Right now, there's no access.
And I just worry that we've eliminated this possibility currently, temporarily, hopefully, for students who have no other way to access outside libraries because they don't have transportation or other options to, and this was an option that was easy for a student to take advantage of if they wanted to read. And one of our promotions in a public school system is to get our students reading.
Sure.
And we know that a lot of the books that were under consideration hadn't even been ever taken out by any of the students. They, they were brought to our attention by a parent, but they were never actually taken out by a student that we could see.
Right. Every Dearborn student is eligible for a Dearborn Public Library card and can access books, eBooks, as well as physical books through the Dearborn Library system.
If we were to have to abandon this one app, do we have a way to get Dearborn libraries to come to individual schools and help students apply for a library card so that they would still have access to library books?
Yes. Many of our schools do that already as part of open house or parent-teacher conferences. I know when I was the principal at Snow, we would have the Dearborn Public Library set up a table in the lobby to sign kids up for, for library cards. So that is certainly something that many schools already do, and we can encourage that as well.
Okay. I just wanted to read one more thing as well. And we were getting a number of emails from parents who are concerned about limiting access to books. And there was a Supreme Court decision in 1982, it's called the Pico decision, and in it, the Supreme Court judge says, "While it is possible for such school-level or district-level reconsideration committees to decide to remove or restrict books, legal precedent and expert best practices demand that committee members and principals, superintendents, and school boards act with the constitutional rights of students in mind, cognizant that it is better to allow access to literature for those who might want it than to eliminate the access for all based on the concerns of any individual or faction." I just want to remind the community that the role, the role of public education is to help our students enter the adult world where they will be faced with a variety of concepts that may not necessarily reflect their own perspectives or values, but that we cannot their own perspectives or values, but that we cannot eliminate their having to deal with those kinds of consequences in the adult world. And it's our responsibility to educate them under our tutelage in a manner that they are prepared to go forward as responsible citizens as they enter the adult world.
Dr. Grover, can you just briefly define what eBooks is, in case someone doesn't know what that term means?
Sure, it's an electronic version of a book that can be read on an electronic device such as an iPad, a Kindle, a Nook, even, and all of those can be added to a Chromebook or a laptop as well, so.
Thank you.
Trustee Barry.
I respect the committee's work on this, I want to call it a debate, because it is a national debate at this moment. I just, a couple of months ago, I watched a three-hour congressional hearing on this. So, I mean, that's going to continue, but I just want to make sure, I don't expect an answer tonight, Mr. Wall, but is our lawyer involved in this process? Let's not, you know, take anything for granted. Let's get our lawyer, get an opinion from our lawyer, you know, we're putting these processes together. We just want to make sure that we're not crossing the lines and putting our taxpayers, our investors in jeopardy. So, I don't want something we did overlooked and we end up in a lawsuit or something.
Will do.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else?
I was just going to say the same thing after trustee Barry. As this committee does start to form, I think we need legal on hand to know whether or not we are violating Supreme Court law here, so.
Great. Anyone else? Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
You're welcome.
Next item, please.
Next item, recognition and acknowledgements, commendations.
Good evening. Commendations to the payroll department for their work dealing with employees, E S S E R, money, and other responsibilities. Thank you to Marsha Sand, Wendy Cosse, and Martha Quayle, especially to Carrie Banshel for answering questions with patience and grace. Commendations to the communications department, food service, payroll, and others who planned another successful staff picnic on August 26th.
Can you please introduce yourself?
I'm Aya Fiyad.
And what school do you attend?
Ah, Forts High School.
Thank you for being here.
Good evening. I'm Hassan. I'm also a Forts student. Commendations to the district's operation crew and to the city's Department of Public Works Public Service Division. These groups came together to help create long elementary's outdoor reading area, which now enables students and teachers to read together under the trees. From district operations, thank you to Brian Kelly, Joe Kelly, Nicholas Harvath, Anthony Gouch, and Nicholas Buzen. From the Department of Public Works Public Service Division, thank you to Holly Maluski, Scott Racer, Matt Holland, Silas Gray, Adam Hatlin, Brian Levangie, and Jake Tomalak. And lastly, commendations to the Lindbergh principal, Zain Atiba. Ms. Atiba recently served on a statewide committee helping evaluate the criteria related to the English as a second language for the Michigan test for teacher certification.
Thank you very much.
Yes, this one's hot off the press. Edsel Ford sophomore Olivia Mackled, representing the Dearborn Figure Skating Club, represented Dearborn in the U.S. Figure Skating Nationals solo ice dancing out in California this past weekend, and she placed sixth place nationally.
Outstanding.
Congratulations to Olivia.
Thank you for that update, trustee Barry.
Next item, please. Acknowledgements of donations.
Good evening, board. Mr. Wall. A donation of a variety of school districts' school supplies has been offered to Edsel Ford High School by Nick Listering to be used for students at Edsel Ford. A donation of backpacks and various school supplies has been offered Dearborn Public Schools by Keller Williams Legacy to be distributed to students in the district. They are still, some are still here, some of our schools came and picked up a bunch, but some are still back here. A donation of backpacks, paper, and various school supplies has been offered to the Dearborn Public Schools by Jack Demmer Automotive Group to be distributed to students in the district, and those supplies have been all distributed. A donation of $125 has been offered to Woodworth Middle School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for endangered species adoption. A donation of $350 has been offered to Snow Elementary School by Mary Lane to be used for a tree to be planted in memory of Shirley Wetmore. I think we had a nice eulogy of Ms. Wetmore at the last board meeting. A donation of $759.50 has been offered to Cotter School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for the Epson Bright Link replacement. A donation of $900 has been offered to Lindbergh Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for yoga materials. Not yogurt, yoga. A donation of $3,000 has been offered to Woodworth Middle School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for paint. It's good paint. A donation of $20,000 has been offered to the Dearborn Public Schools by the Dearborn Education Foundation in partnership with Ford to be used for the robotics program. We want to thank all of those who donated to our district. It truly, truly is a partnership that helps this school district survive and helps this school district do those extra things, and we appreciate all of those partnerships. We appreciate all of those donations, and we thank them all for what they have donated.
We certainly do. And thank you, Mr. Mosin. Next item, please.
Staff recognition, custodial, and BOS staff.
Hello, Sean Donahue, Assistant Director of Plan Operations. How's everybody doing tonight? Good. Like to first thank Dr. Malak, I know he's not here, all the members of the board. Appreciate everything you do for us, for the students, you know, first, and staff, parents, much appreciated. We had a pretty rough summer this year, trying to get the buildings ready. It's a little different than years past with our extended summer school program. We have a couple of members here. As you know, the majority of our custodial and BOS crew works evening, so a lot of them couldn't be here tonight, but we do have a couple here tonight representing the custodians. First of all, I'd like to thank Kira Lewis, Custodial C for McDonald Elementary. And next, I'd like to thank Ms. Deborah Liszkis, Custodial C also from McDonald Elementary. Thank you for your time and appreciate everything that you do for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on just a moment. Let's get a picture.
Small group, but very important.
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item?
Staff recognition. So as you recall, we pull, staff always has the opportunity to nominate their colleagues for making their day and their workplace a better place. And over the summer months, we took a break, and now we're back to it. And the people that are selected get a $50 gift card and $100 winner. Special thanks to Nicole Beckham in HR, because I kind of handed this off, and, and she's, she's going to be facilitating it. So thank you to her. Okay, so the winners are Nadine Sharara, she's a teacher at River Oaks, Kristen Latrell, a teacher at Edsel Ford, Haifa Murad Shama, a teacher at Dearborn High, Lori Courtright, a teacher at Duval, Maureen Nocevic, a teacher at Howard, Jennifer Stortini, a teacher at Henry Ford Elementary, Jamili Al Galal, a teacher at Snow, Dawn Hunt, a speech pathologist at HAO, Emma Haj, a teacher at Edsel Ford, and also Danny May, a teacher at Hague. Hardly enough, all 10 were teachers, because usually we have, it comes out with a bunch of different classifications. So, so this month, it was all teachers. And I'm just going to read one of the nominations. I'm going to read, they were all so awesome, but I'm going to choose to read Emma Haj, a teacher at Edsel Ford. Emma had a couple nominations. She has made film study and interesting and sought after class at Edsel Ford High School. Her students adore her. She is the level leader for our Language Arts three-fourth, 10th-grade team and works very hard to keep us organized. She's very tech savvy and creative. She does a lot of work for our 10th-grade team in terms of running our professional learning communities, creating reviews for us to use before assignment assessments, and working for our union to keep us united. She is very organized and detailed in all that she does. Congratulations, Emma, and thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Approval of minutes, approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting, regular pre-12 meeting, August 22, 2022, board report 22, hyphen 27. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So move.
Support.
We have a motion by trustee Di Ambrogio and supported by trustee Barry. Are there any corrections?
It was a slow month compared to July.
Hearing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Di Ambrogio.
Yes.
Trustee Mosip?
Yes.
Trustee Petchikoff?
Yes.
Trustee Thorpe?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes. President McDonald?
Yes.